Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given September 13, 2024. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard for from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard for must be submitted to the Secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering in the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, October 7, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website at www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, if you could lead us in the vision and mission?
The vision: Every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Crackey?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Tealyn?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Erdenberger?
Here.
Foal?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Holman?
Present.
Juarez? Eight, present.
Thank you. And Ms. Juarez did let me know she'd be running late this evening. Do we have a motion to excuse her absence? Motion by Ms. Erdenberger, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Foal? Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Foal?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey? Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, we have our OPS Proud Spotlight with Information Management Services.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Superintendent Wright. Tonight, we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Kennedy Elementary, Wilson Focus Elementary, and the Elementary Gate Program. The Apple Distinguished Schools Program recognizes school communities that showcase innovation over the course of a year-long application process. The dedicated educators here in the Omaha Public Schools set ambitious goals and worked tirelessly with their students to inspire, imagine, and impact learning throughout rigorous use of Apple's educational tools. This fall, these three schools were granted the honor of being recognized as among only 889 Apple Distinguished Schools and programs across 37 countries. We are proud to join in celebrating their hard work and recognition they have earned by embodying the three pillars of becoming an Apple Distinguished School: inspire, imagine, and impact. I will now turn it over to our representatives to provide more details about this prestigious honor.
Good evening. Kennedy staff and students are very excited to celebrate our Apple Distinguished School renewal. We have worked to inspire our students to learn and thrive in this dynamic world. When using their iPad devices, students are empowered to create products and publish their learning for others to see. From interactive maps and keynote, to designing student businesses for our makers market, to publishing the student news, our students are engaged in activities that prepare them for success in college, career, and life. Teachers collaborate across classrooms and grade levels to build capacity, personalize learning, and design innovative opportunities leveraging the technology tools to inspire a love of learning. From letter tiles and science notebooks and keynote, to Magic Movie and iMovie to model literacy concepts, our students are creators with a bright future ahead of them.
At Wilson Focus School, we're dedicated to empowering our students to explore new possibilities and solutions through our unique programming and through a foundation of student ownership, collaboration, creativity, and a vibrant school culture. For example, a fourth grade student's passion project evolved into a class-wide initiative. The students utilize stop-motion animation to bring key scenes from our school play, The Willy Wonka Musical, to life. The collaborative project not only fostered new friendships, but also allowed students to acquire and hone new skills, highlighting the power of imagination, creativity, and teamwork in our learning environment.
Good evening. I'm Beth Maloney, and I represent the Gifted and Talented Program. Our journey to become an Apple Distinguished Program began four years ago when we decided that we didn't want to just use the Apple tools. We wanted to master them and use them to elevate our instruction to a higher level of innovation and create tasks that challenge our students to think deeper about the content. It has been thrilling to watch this goal come to life in our classrooms. There are 19 Gate facilitators in our elementary schools. All 19 facilitators are Apple-certified teachers. Seven facilitators are Apple learning coaches, and five have attended the Apple Learning Academy. We are also proud to have the only Apple Distinguished teacher in the Omaha Public Schools, Jessmyn Schultz. This specialized training and drive for excellence in the Gate Program means that every elementary school in the Omaha Public Schools has been impacted. We are excited to share our knowledge and ideas with everyone that we work with. We welcome any questions.
Well, thank you so much for being here. We'll open it up to questions. Ms. Crackey?
I was just going to ask you to identify all the ways that you can become in the gifted program. It isn't just being real, real smart, it's all these other things. Can you tell us about that?
So, we look at multiple things such as cognitive ability and achievement, but also leadership, creativity, motivation, and performance in the classroom. Many, many ways to become a gifted and talented student. But we hope that our work with Apple is going beyond even the Gate Program into many, many students' lives.
Thank you.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Head. I'm not going to ask all our kiddos to talk, but if you all, kiddos that participated in these programs would stand up for a second to get a good, healthy round of applause, please. Do we have any kiddos here?
Those are mine. We have a lot of teachers here, though.
Oh, okay. So, is everybody else a teacher?
A teacher, yeah.
Oh, well, thank you so much. How many? I'm sorry. Yes, even better. I thought maybe all the kids were short because I actually didn't see any, but whatever. And how many, across how many countries was this award given?
There are 37 countries currently participating.
37 countries, and we had three.
We have three.
Excellent. Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much, everybody, for your hard work. You're making us OPS proud.
Dr. Holman? Sorry, I thought you raised your hand down there. All right, well, thank you again for being, oh, Ms. Crackey, you've got one more.
I just want to advocate for Kennedy and their program downstairs. I happened to go there on a day that they did not have children, and so they spent a lot of time with me, but it is such a program down there, just for fun. Go there. I mean, it's wonderful downstairs. The things they make and do down there, you can't believe. They showed me a pen like they have on. I mean, but they make all kinds of things. I just, I, the day I went there, I know I was just floating when I left there. And I went home, and I told my daughter and everybody I could about the program there, but you have to see it so you really know why I'm saying that. So, try to get that in your schedule because you'll really enjoy going there, and they're so nice to you when you go there. Thank you.
Well, thank you all again for being here. We greatly appreciate all you do for OPS and our students. I love seeing so many, you know, innovative and ingenuative minds that we have with the district and finding ways to take the technology that we have and, you know, utilize it for our students. You know, just hearing the story of the fourth grade class doing a stop-motion project. I have strategically forgotten a lot of what I did in fourth grade, but I guarantee you it was not stop-motion on an iPad. So, no, that is, that's absolutely amazing. So, the teachers here, can you just give us a couple of examples of, and maybe not everybody, but just a few folks if you want to, you know, examples of things that you use the iPads for, the technology in your classroom, for kind of cool projects that you've undertaken with your students? Don't all jump at once. Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Dan Levitt. I'm the librarian at Wilson Focus. I do a lot of tech integration with literacy and, and a lot of different other variety of things. And one of the things that I integrated last year was, we finally got a 3D printer at Wilson Focus, and so what the students were doing in variety of grade levels, where the third grade, what we did was a curricular kind of a melding into it. We, they designed a game piece, they designed a board game in their classroom, and I came in with a 3D printer, and they used a program called Tinkercad, and they created a game piece for their, for their game that they created in the, as part of the curriculum. Other things that we've done was like a Shark Tank program for our sixth grade. We, they had to use Pages, Enote, Tinkercad. We, I use a lot of the iPad with, when it comes to giving them a big immersive experience into what they do, so. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right.
We have a showcase in December at UNO, and we would love to have some of you come to that. The sixth graders have to really put on a show and come prepared. They wear their suits, they get to speak in front of their parents, and it really is, it's a really great showcase of learning.
Absolutely. We'll make sure to get it on the agenda for everybody to, everybody to take a look at. So, thank you again. We greatly appreciate all that you do. Thank you for being here. All right, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Wright? Sorry, one, one second. If we could have, yep, sorry, skipped, skipped the picture. If everybody could come up real quick and we could do a picture real quick? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Wright?
President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and our community. I want to recognize the strength and courage of our Northwest High staff, students, and families through last week. A student, a staff member, and the school resource officer were the first to help the young person who was injured. Thank you. People followed standard response protocols on Tuesday afternoon and supported each other in the days that followed. Thank you to law enforcement and first responders who rushed in and stayed present throughout the week, to Dr. Jackson, the leadership team, and all Northwest staff who cared for students while processing what happened themselves, to students for their strength, their resolve, and their returning to school, and to families for their patience through our reunification process and supporting students since then. Our student who was hurt and their family are in our thoughts as they recover. Nothing is more important to us than our students and staff. We care so much about each person in our school, whether it's contacting school leadership, law enforcement, or Safe to Help Nebraska, we appreciate everyone speaking up if something isn't right. We take every report seriously and investigate. Our district reviews procedures regularly. We have and will continue to review what happened at Northwest High School. I shared last week in a message to staff and families that our district will cooperate fully with any law enforcement investigation. We are briefing the Board regularly and will continue to share information as we learn. Extra support was available at schools on Thursday and Friday. Each person is on their own path to healing. It's okay not to be okay. Support will remain available for students and staff who need it. If you or someone you know is struggling, contact a school leader or Safe to Help Nebraska right away.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next, we have Board Communications. Dr. Holman, for a statement?
Thank you, President Head. Like Mr. Wright has stated, we are certainly thinking of our student and our family as they recover during this time. And on the, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to take a moment to thank the students, the staff, and the families who showed the best of Northwest High through the worst of situations. So, thank you all. We appreciate the partners, the police, fire, counselors, and everyone who has responded and supported the school all week. As a Northwest graduate, I know personally the amazing things that the students and the staff are doing there every single day. I love Northwest High School, and the school holds a tremendously special place in my heart. The privilege to serve as Board members is personal to each and every single one of us at this table. We are Omaha Public Schools' parents, we have been Omaha Public Schools' teachers, and we have been Omaha Public Schools' students ourselves. For our Board and our district, safety is always a priority. Our district reviews these procedures constantly, and I know the staff have already begun reviewing last week's response and will continue to do so. In the coming days and weeks, the district will continue to work with our law enforcement partners and conduct our own internal review of the incident. As we continue to learn more from both law enforcement and our own review, administration and the Board will continue to collaborate and discuss next steps. And I just want to remind everyone that support is available for anyone who may need it. If you know someone who is struggling, please speak up and send them towards the different support services that we do have available. We stand with Northwest High students, staff, and families as they heal together. Thank you, President Head.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Do we have any other Board comment this evening? No? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public comment and recognition. We have two speakers who submitted request to speak forms tonight, and the Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinion of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us into looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the Board identify yourself, including an address and name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. And we have one request for a waiver this evening. I apologize, I didn't catch that earlier and pass it down. Let's, give us two minutes to take a look at that. All right, so the following individual, Prashana Reyes, has requested a waiver for security reasons. Do we have a motion to approve said request?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Erdenberger. Any discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Foal?
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, again, Ms. Reyes, you will be, the requirement is waived for you to state your address. All other individuals, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're here representing any particular organization. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let, let Dr. McFarland know, and she will come get them from you. It is 6:25 PM, and our first speaker is Justin Riddle.
It's Justin Riddle, J-U-S-T-I-N, R-I-D-D-L-E. And before I, oh, it's 16422 Patrick Ab. I know you were going to say something, Spencer. You love getting that one in. I'm going to sing you guys a little bit of a song I wrote real quick. It's real quick, and then I'm going to destroy you, folks. Why is it so hard for me to concentrate? Because I have ADHD. I just took a DNA test. Turns out, I 100% have ADHD. I'm really trying. Can you repeat? I'm so sorry, I forgot what you said. Ding ding, that's the clock, it says it's time for my meds. Trying to pay attention, not just a little. Instead, I walk around all blank and noncommittal. Tried all my life, come to find, that's how it's gonna be. That's right, ma, it's real, the test says ADHD. What? Why do people talk when cats are playing? Makes it hard for me to focus, all I'm saying. Walking circles all night long, PM through AM. Fill the Adderall, it's running through my veins. Why do people snap their fingers in my face? They just can't understand that I'm in space. I'll just go and find myself a happy place. Bum bum, bum ba bum bum. That's all you get. Now, why would I play that? Because I'm a normal guy. I have fun. I enjoy life. You guys are liars, and guess what I'm going to do? Because of the, and I won't necessarily say I'm going to start with you, Mr. Wright, because now, one thing different about you and the rest of these liars up here, you're actually employed by OPS, not elected. He nods. Like an open book, folks. I don't know if any of you have been here before. I know some of you have, but apparently, everybody in the state loves just getting lied to by the state, by the school board, by that liar over there, that one. You want to talk again this time, I'm going to sue you for that last one. You cut me off. Did you add my time? Did you add my time, McFarland? I don't think you did. Now, Ms. McFarland said the other day, what was it? Hmm, we won't get into that, but here's what I am going to do. Now that I've got all the evidence, nobody can contest anything I've said, and like, again, whether the public wants to believe it or not, you could prove me wrong by finding the evidence and then going, oh, nope, this guy's right. These folks are liars. And so what I'm going to do is with my newfound army, who offer up video edits and stuff, and I'm like, no, you know what I would really like? you know what I would really like? Find information on each one of these folks, and I'm going to showcase each one of these liars every meeting from here on out. I might start with Spencer because he's out. He's going to be gone soon. He got voted out by somebody else, I guess, because people don't like liars and whatever, but you guys won't know who it's going to be first. I hate to say this, Nancy, you're one of my family's best friends. You're one of my mom's best friends. You should not let this keep happening. You should, you know the truth. So do all these other liars, but guess what the difference between you and these liars is? You know me. You've known me since I was born. You need to step up, because guess what? You guys, like, folks, I've done something in the United States justice system that's never been done in the history of the law. You can look my videos up on YouTube. It's number one because nobody's ever done it, period. These folks right here, they sit here, and they never respond. They will literally respond to a cat video online, but what won't they respond to? The facts. The proof that they lied to the Attorney General.
One minute.
Oh, you adding a minute this time, McFarland, or are you just going to sit over there and do your thing? No? Do I get my extra time for loudmouth over there? No? Say something. So in any case, yeah, after years of abuse, I don't have a lot of patience for these liars, but you know what? They're teaching our children that when it's not fun and it's not comfortable and you've done something wrong, lie.
Thirty seconds.
Lie. Right? McFarland, why can't you fill the information request? You say there's no information. Is that still the truth? Anyways, you can see the rest of my ADHD song. It's actually really good, but one of you folks is going to just get absolutely annihilated next time, and then the next time, and then the next time, and you deserve it. And Mr. Ray, we're coming after your job if you don't step up right away.
Time.
Next up is Preysana Reyes.
Good evening. My name's Preysana Reyes. It's spelled P-R-E-S-H-A-N-A. Last name Reyes, R-E-Y-E-S. My concern is the zero tolerance policy and what negative effects it has on our children in schools. I also have a concern about our public safety with our children being able to go to school safely. Now, I had addressed with Northwest High School, the second-day school, that there was a violent student that had transferred from Benson High School over to that school. This student that transferred over there had threatened to kill my child. He had held a knife to my child. And on top of that, the full freshman year, he has been beaten by multiple students, jumped from behind. My son was told that he would have to switch schools in order to be safe, because even their plan would not keep him safe when they put him on a safety plan. Not alone did I warn Northwest High School that there is violent students and gang members in school, but I also let the OPS Tac Building know that students are buying guns for $150 on the streets. My question is, why do we not have metal detectors in our schools? My question is, why are you guys keeping violent students in school, knowing that they're violent students, knowing that they pick on several students? It doesn't matter what grade it is in, but you guys are protecting their education, but you're not protecting the ones that actually want to get an education and are not getting in trouble? Why is it every single time I have to listen to another parent, and they're asking me, what should I do? What should I do? I say, call the Tac Building. But guess what? Nobody removes those children from schools. They keep them there, so all the victims have to suffer and not get a good education and go home. The school has the nerve to tell the victim that has been getting picked on or bullied that they need to switch schools, or they need to switch class, or they need to be followed around. So I want to know why you guys implemented this zero tolerance policy, so our children are scared to actually fight back, so that way it does not get to a point where they bring weapons to school. Not saying it's going to work for everybody or everything, but why are we punishing the victims? Do any of you guys have an answer for that? Because I'm sure a lot of these parents would like to know. And I would also want to know exactly why you guys are not taking threats in our school system seriously. If a kid threatens to kill another child, it should be taken seriously. They should not be going back to class, because that actually happened at Blue STEM as well, and I was on the phone, and they allowed that student to stay in class, even after putting their hands on another student. Enough is enough. I'm sure each and every one of the parents are fed up. It breaks my heart. My condolences to the victim and their family, but I am not going to sit up here and stand around and continue to watch our children not get an education or feel safe in our school districts. What can we do to change this? That should be you guys' main priority. If we have money and extra funds, we need metal detectors in our schools. We also need school break window breakers so the students can get out just in case. I don't know how many school shootings I had to hear about last week when I was in New York City. My son, that was his education. I took him to New York City because he was not able to attend school because he did not feel safe. Now, it's so funny that
One minute.
After this incident at Northwest, I got a call saying, oh, we're going to change your mind, or this could change your mind. That student is no longer enrolled in the school. Well, guess what? That shooting just happened. So now my son's safe to come back, but you guys couldn't switch my son to another school district or another school system when I had begged and pleaded multiple times? This subject has been going on for over a year. This is the second year.
Thirty seconds.
I am highly disappointed in our OPS system right now. I'm very disappointed, like, very disappointed in the Tac Building. We are all parents, and we should be able to make sure that our children are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Moving on to consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and considered and voted on separately. Do we have a motion to pull anything off the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us.
So moved.
Mr. Smith with the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any abstentions?
Yes, President Head.
Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, I have item I-13 for claim C for my role on the OPS Foundation as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other abstentions? All right, seeing none. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda before us, subject to Ms. Cassidy's abstention on Claim Report C. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to information items. Item J-1A, a curriculum committee update. Ms. Crackkey?
On September 16th, that was earlier this afternoon, the curriculum committee meeting met. All committee members were present. At the meeting, staff from curriculum and instruction support discussed renewing our EdmontonTum credit recovery software. EdmontonTum is a digital platform used during next-level learning and during credit recovery school programs. The content is aligned with the Nebraska State College and Career Ready standards. Staff receive professional learning and expectations are provided to support successful use for students and staff. In addition, staff briefly discussed another item on the consent agenda, that is to reject all current bids for K-12 physical education textbooks. Both vendors were missing requirements from their response to our requests for proposals, so therefore were not compliant. A second RFP invitation is scheduled for 9/17/24 with a two-week submission window. In addition to K-12 physical education curriculum, the district is also considering curriculum adoptions in music and for the alternative curriculum program. We will bring you more details regarding the K-12 curriculum adoptions at a future meeting. This concludes the curriculum committee update.
Thank you, Ms. Crackkey. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, seeing none. Moving on, item J-1B, policy committee update. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Policy committee met on September 12th, 2024. In attendance, myself, Ms. Erdnberger, and Ms. Juarez. Continued to discuss the 6000s. We also discussed a number of policies in the 5000s that were affected by recent legislation and required changes. Those will be coming to the board for approval as information items probably at the next meeting. That's all for the update.
Thank you, Mr. Tealyn. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, seeing none. Moving on to action items. Item J-2A, approval of the first reading of policies 6211 and 8273. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Both of these policies were on information at our last meeting, 6211 and 8273, but I will certainly take any further questions if there are any at this time.
Any questions? Ms. Erdnberger?
I would just ask that you remind us what the subject of these policies is, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. No, that's okay. 8273, I know, is removals and vacancies. That's a policy in the 8000s that deals with what happens when a board member is absent and how they're, they might be removed from their seat. There were some legislative, not changes, but just a closer look at those statutes that affect that. They were, there's a little, they're a little bit unclear, and we revisited those and decided to change the language. We think this is more accurate. And then, the other policy is 6211, curriculum and assessments. This is mostly just changing language to conform to current practice. There were, I think, also some deletions that we, things that we took out that were really not on the policy level, that were really more at the administrative or tactical level that we took out of the policy.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Mr. Tealyn, did I hear a motion from the committee?
That is a motion on behalf of the committee. That's right.
Perfect. All right, we have a committee motion to approve the first reading of policies 6211 and 8273. It doesn't require a second. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Eightye.
Oh, and Ms. Juarez is.
Ms. Juarez.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll update that.
All right, motion carries with nine ayes. Moving on, we have no receivable reports on the agenda this evening, so moving to closed session. Mr. Smith?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, Charles Wakefield, legal counsel, real estate, pending litigation, and legal advice.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crackkey. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Nineye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary of the board, Charles Wakefield, and legal counsel, real estate, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 6:43 PM. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 6:43 PM.
Let the record reflect the board came out of closed session at 7:29 PM. Let the record reflect the board meeting adjourned at 7:29 PM.